Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, we left... Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, we left off last week. Again, if you recall, I had some questions as to the methodology in which the administration has been used for calculating revenues, these revised revenue estimates for the fiscal year 2007. We'd gone through corporate, and of course, we have not gone through individual, but again, I requested a little bit more detailed explanation, actually detailed explanation, as to how the calculations for these revisions were made. And again, there was statements made by yourself, Ms. Paris, that the administration is using a different form of calculation based on a five-year historical track. And again, to reiterate some of my concerns is, it was very clear from the past, at least, that the representations made by the administration, BBMR, that they were using this three-year historical model for tracking. When I asked that, yourself, on now the five-year tracking, I was asking, when did this occur? When did the change in policy occur? And with that change of policy, I asked you also that there was a rationale as to the three-year model, and that was again, based on that the earlier years, I think 2002 and 2003, there were some very, there was anomalies and aberrations as a result of, you know, the 9/11, the typhoons, and with that, there was, again, there was an attempt by the administration to build from a more stable base. And then, I think, what you did mention with the five-year model, there were certain years that were used. And that's why I want to just continue in that vein before I go into questions in regards to the individual tax category. If you can explain in more detail what this five-year model is, and what years were used. Again, if you can recall, you mentioned it was not, I guess it was not a continuous historical trend, but more of a, you picked certain years that were, I guess, would be non-aberration. At least, that's what I assumed and I gathered from your presentation. So again, I want to get a little bit, I want to get clearer detail on exactly what you meant, and clearer detail on the methodology.
I think the statement I tried to make, Senator Calvo, was that, you know, we look back a number of years, and the more data or the more pool of information you have, generally speaking, your forecasting would be, would tend to be more accurate. We do look three years, we do look four years, we do look five years, we even look back 10 years, 12 years, and determine whether or not there seems to be at least some rate of growth that we're comfortable with, no matter what, you know, kind of like what is the rate of growth that we feel is reachable, assuming that there are no abnormalities or aberrations. And we've determined that, based on the assumptions, and obviously, in any forecasting, you try to be, you are, you try to be as objective as you can, but when you start taking assumptions, you also try to, they are some, there is some subjectivity involved, whether or not you want to be ultra-conservative, you know, very optimistic, that sort of stuff.
Yeah, and I can understand, because when you look at corporate year-to-date from just one previous year, we're up by 11%. And of course, I understand that, you know, income taxes, there's different periods within the year, but again, in a five-year tracking, I mean, the five-month tracking, at least as opposed to the previous year, you're up by 11% in actual collections. The thing is now, you have adjusted your estimates based on the $61,491,271, in which you've currently placed in there, you've currently revised in corporate income taxes. That's about a 6.4% increase from the prior year, and I'm talking actual. So I don't mind the conservatism. And again, Lou, again, I'm, this is a time for conservatism, so I have no problem with that. But again, if you can tell me what years, when it came to the calculation, would figure '06, would that be correct, '06?
We used the minimum of the three years in determining...
So '06, '05, '04?
Yeah, a minimum of the three years, definitely.
Okay, so you use that. You mentioned five years, what other, what were the other two years that was mentioned? You mentioned a five...
Actually, we went back as five years, and there's a range of, you know, final estimated numbers that occur.
Okay, so you used '03 and '02?
Yeah, went ahead and looked at that.
So '03 and '02 were used. And again, and I'm just going to reiterate, '03, '02, and '03, there were concerns from BBMR in the past, that those particular years, because of the situation, both in natural disasters, that it caused, again, a weird economic period, and they were considered aberrations, both in disruptions, and also in terms of monies coming in through federal aid, insurance, and SBA. Okay, so '02, '03, '04, '05, and '06. Let me, again, just be very understanding of how it comes. You have this five-year tracking period, and right now, we're looking from, again, the previous year back to '02. Just, and as simple as possible, explain how you come up with these numbers, and now, of course, you still have seven months left in the fiscal year. And maybe for the purposes, I have an idea how you do it, but I want to, I want to make sure we're doing it the right way, because we don't have a representative of BBMR here, and this is where we kind of understood how they were tracking things. Please explain, with that five-year period, what is the methodology in which you came up with these calculations? You go back five years, then what do you do with those five-year periods? Let's say, let's say we have now, we have, we've gone through corporate income taxes, corporate income taxes, year-to-date, we are at $19 million, oh, $21,643,707. The year, now what we do know, and I don't have the historical reference at this point for the prior years, but for fiscal year 2006, there is a $19,562,161 collected as of that, of February 28, 2006. So from just last year to this year, you're showing an 11% increase in actual collections. So you've made an adjustment that would, would, again, I have no problem with conservatism, but would adjust the numbers based on actual collections from the previous year of a 6.4% increase. So there's some conservatism there. But with that conservatism, I want to get an idea from based on '05, '04, '03, and '02, how you came up with that number. I won't ask this question again as we go over, as we go over the other lines, but I just want to get an understanding of the methodology, and then from there, you know, you answer that question, and hopefully, all the rest of the legislative body will feel secure in how you came about with that calculation, then we can move along, and using that same mindset and same methodology, we can also apply to the numbers that are, we see right now, currently.
Senator, like I said, there is always a little bit of subjectivity when doing projections. I'm sure your staff has, they have their own assumptions, and we do too. We always, you know, we look at as many number of years as we can that will help us come up with something that we feel a high degree of certainty we're going to receive or achieve, realize, the first five months as compared against all of the first five months of the preceding years.
Actually, what I want to, you know, I don't want to be the one to tell, explain, I want you to explain to me, what, I mean, just the basic formula. We do realize, we have March, and I'm, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to try to assist in the, in the, in how numbers come out, but we have March coming up of 2007. And obviously, we had March, we don't have it now, because the month is not completed, but March of 2007, we can only estimate for that particular month, how much, we can base it on what came in in March 2006. We can also look that for a period of three years or five years, March was a certain percentage of the total revenues that were collected of the whole year. And as you get every month, you get an understanding, when the actual numbers come in, on how it compares to the year before, and of the year before, for that particular month, how much was of the whole pie. Now, I'm saying that just to try to get an idea of how things work. Is that correct? Is that how it's done? And if you're going back five years...
Ordinarily, yes, of course, you look at how your revenues flow, and depending on when taxes are due, and when retail sales are the best, then yes, the model takes that into consideration. In other words, you don't expect revenues to come in one-twelfth exactly the same, you don't pro-rated, straight line. It's, we try to base it on actual, or it is based on when revenues are actually recorded and received throughout the year. And so, it's, in a sense, it's weighted.
Exactly, and that's, and so, what you're, what you're telling me right now, is what you revised for 2007. You're using a methodology that goes back five years, you're looking at every particular month, correct? And it's historical tracking based on the five prior years, correct?
It's historical tracking, minimum based on the three years. We did look back four or five years and worry, it did not seem to, you know, we tried to smooth it out, those abnormalities, then those obviously are considered and not really made a part of the formula. In other words, we smoothed out the years.
You smoothed out the years, but you're using from fiscal year 2002 to upward?
That's right, but obviously, we could not use that.
Okay, give me an idea what your assumptions are. You mentioned that, you know, there's a certain base, and then you make certain assumptions.
I did, I do recall saying on Friday, Senator, that when we look at these years, we always look for the abnormalities, the extraordinary activities, and we take those out. These activities may either be good activities or bad ones, they can either go either way, so they don't become a part of our kind of baseline model in terms of projecting.
2002, 2003, the, again, it was a very bizarre year, and with a typhoon hitting, and there's a disruption in economic activity, many businesses were closed for several, three or four weeks, some even longer. There was, again, a stoppage of regular flow of revenues into the government of Guam, because there was a stoppage of regular flow of revenues to businesses. The same time, there were some other things that were occurring there, you know, again, the FEMA food stamps, and then later on, you know, and whether it's insurance claims or SBA loans, maybe a year from there, two years. Was it, were these taken into account?
They were, they were taken into account in the extent that we analyzed each of those years, and those that we thought were extraordinary activities would not be a part of your baseline. As a, you know, as a result of the storm, you basically go to a year that's kind of a, you would use a conservative year in terms of growth.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just going to throw out certain, and again, got folks, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to put you in a position, I just want to understand your methodology. In 2002, when we did have the typhoon, there was a, there was, obviously, some of the hotels shut down, so was there, what did you see in hotel occupant, let's say, hotel occupancy taxes? Was there a disruption?
I don't have the old year spreadsheet in front of me, but I...
And that's, I think that would be easy to track.
Yeah, I would imagine.
What about, what about things such as, and if I can recall, there was an additional 60, you tell me, how much more, there is normal food stamps that comes into the island of Guam, on an annual base, again, based on our poverty level and those folks that are eligible. Now, as a result of the typhoon, food stamps were made available to a greater percentage of the people of Guam, and it had, and it was, it was in the millions and tens of millions of dollars. Do you recall how much tens of million dollars increase in food stamps were injected into the island of Guam?
Not offhand.
Okay. But was that, was that taken into consideration, obviously, with food stamps, it has an impact on sales as well? Was that, was there softening that occurred as a result of that?
I believe, Senator, I've already explained that we look at old years, we go back, in three years minimum, we look at all the other years, see how they performed, and in coming up with what our number is for this year, we took the conservative approach, and we based it, obviously, some of the assumptions may be different from the model, but basically, the model is the same. It's determining what factors to remove to make it baseline, that's kind of where maybe their differences are.
Yeah, and again, I guess what, again, I'm not going to ask you for the details. The only thing, again, I'm concerned about is, again, you've used 2002 and 2003, and my concern was, not too long ago, there was a concern from the administration, particularly BBMR, that those were very aberrant, aberrant, I'm not sure if I pronounced that, we have a couple of principal here, is that correct, how to pronounce it, aberrant? Okay, but it, these were considered years that were anomalies, and it's very, because we don't have a tracking and gross island product, it's very difficult to try to track all these insurance claims coming in, disaster relief monies coming in, these SBA loans that are, again, real, you know, advantageous. But anyway, I guess I have an understanding. The, but it's five years. The individual income tax, we're in that category now, again, what was ratified based on the original budget as submitted by the administration, was $43,485,645. There has been a revision of $60,863,748. That's quite substantial, actually, that's, that's about a 39-some percent, I mean, substantial. Can you advise us how that number came about?
If you look at all these taxes, income tax, withholding taxes, they all relate. If you either withhold in the beginning of the year, or during the year, or you pay at the end of the year, what seems to be happening is the last couple, three years, we have not been paying our refunds. So what we've noticed is, a lot of people are starting to realize that and say, hey, man, let's not give the government the money upfront, and start paying at the end of the year. So if you notice, income tax withholding is going down, and the individuals is going up.
So there's a direct, there's, I was going to get to that, there's a direct converse relationship?
Right. There's a relationship between withholding during the year and then making the payment at the end of the year.
I thought with withholding, you basically have a set income level, a certain pay scale, and with that pay scale, there's a certain percentage, again, a lot of folks...
It shows if you're gross income and you're dependents, but it doesn't show how many people are under 16. So you got that $1,000 for each child under 16. It doesn't take into account the itemized deduction, it's just straight standard deduction. So if people have those deductions, and are not, and are not able to go to the table and claim those deductions, what they would do is, is even lower their withholding taxes to accommodate what they, what they should have gotten last year. Let's say they're supposed to get $4,000, and they don't get it, so they try to reduce their withholding by that amount, so that they don't have to wait for a refund.
Okay, so when you see this increase in individual income tax collections, a lot of it is not based on these folks getting an increase in pay, or, again, new resources of income, it's just based on a calculation to...
Part of it probably is, the economy's probably growing, more people are probably getting jobs and filing taxes.
Yeah, what is the year-to-date at this point, at February 2006 collections? We just got the statement from you folks, yeah, in fact, this is from Department of Administration. The copy, by the way, has been passed out to members of the body, but again, for purposes of record, what are the, what is the year-to-date as of February 28, 2007, for individual Well anyways, it's...
I don't have the table.
Oh, you don't have the... Okay, I'm going to need one of, this is from you folks, by the way, this is from Department of Administration. Can we get a copy of this, this has been passed out to the members of the body? Let's just...
We'll go ahead and take one minute.
Okay.
We'll be in recess.
Thank you. Again, just want to, so we're all in the same page. Again, these are the numbers that have been provided by the administration, DOA. So we have individual corporate tax, individual tax collections as of February 2007, year-to-date. What are they? I'm sorry, Art, can you get a little closer to that mic, or is it, or turn it on? There you go.
As of February 28, we're looking at $16,642,810 million.
Yeah, and then, of course, based on your statement, on the year-to-date as of fiscal year 2006, what is that number? Oh, just year-to-date.
Right, 2006?
2006.
It's $12,680,15.
That's a substantial increase, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
An increase of $3,962,795. And that is about a 31%, increase year-to-date as opposed to the previous fiscal year. Now, I'm going to ask you the same question, that's about 31%. You're forecasting, you're forecasting individual income tax at 100, excuse me, at $60,863,748. Correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Now, year-to-date, total last year, individual was at $47,125,080, correct? Last year, for total revenues collected for individual?
That's correct.
So based on your revised figure, $60,863,748, that's an increase of $13,738,668, based on the actual collections. I'm not even looking at projections, I'm just looking at the actual for '06, correct?
That's correct.
That's about 29.2%, 30%, which is kind of like what we're tracking. So you are, you're basically online with year-to-date, I mean, just, if you were just to not look at the previous five years, but from the previous year, you're, you're tracking the first five months, pretty much akin to what, and if you move it forward, very aggressively increases in individual income tax, correct?
That's correct, but also last year, sir, when we noticed the first five months of revenues coming in, we were really showing numbers coming in, but all of a sudden, it just dropped, and from then on, it was just slowed for the rest of the year. It wasn't, it wasn't at the rate we were expecting it to...
This was individual income tax or all categories?
All categories.
Do you recall what happened, and now we ask, why do you think that happened?
I think the gas prices, and people started to be conservative with their money.
Yeah, so April, April of last year, everything took, everything just kind of froze, correct?
Right.
Okay, and I'm just, I'm just, what I'm trying to show you here now, that is, for the first five months of this fiscal year, after the crisis of fuel, and we're still feeling the impact of it, of course, both in power bills, and in, in power bills as well as in gas prices, year-to-date, there's about an 11% increase in corporate and a 31% increase in individual, correct?
I said correct.
And I'm just basing it on the FY 2007, year-to-date to February 28, '07 numbers. Correct? Did you say correct, and then I'm...
Okay, based on your numbers, it looks right.
Yeah, the numbers are what I'm getting from Department of Administration. These are all, okay. So the bottom line is, individual taxes, you are very aggressive in your, and optimistic based on what was originally ratified, but looking at the tracking, at least for the past year, I can see why you're, you're at this optimistic. But obviously, I don't, I still, I'm not too sure about your five-year methodology, because again, of 2000, 2003, but I understand. That's all the questions I have at this point for the individual taxes. I don't know whether anyone...
Yeah, we do have other speakers. Senator Lujan?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a couple of questions in regards to the tracking methodology here. Just to go on with the vice speaker had, was asking about, as opposed to the three years, you were going back five years, right? What is, what has been the rate of growth on this government over the past five years? Let's start with 2002, 2003. Granted, back in 2002, we had some disasters that we had to deal with and all that, but what was, what has been the rate of growth since 2002 to the present? If we can go from 2002, 2003, 2004, 2005, and '06, and then, based on the rate of growth, the projected, projected collections based on the rate of growth and the actual collections in those years, do we have, do we have that?
I think the economist, if he's got numbers on previous years and the growth of the economy, maybe he can speak to it.
We'll go ahead and ask you to turn on your microphone. Mr. Howes, if you just, Dr. Howes, if you just identify yourself to the body as you begin your testimony. We'll go ahead and ask you to turn on your microphone. Mr. Howes, if you just... Dr. Howes, if you just identify yourself to the body as you begin your testimony.
Gary Howes, Chief Economist, Department of Labor.
Okay, I guess maybe we can just... We could start off with what has been the average rate of growth in the past five years? Start off with that, and then we can go to the individual years.
Right off the bat, I want to quote correct numbers. F Y two thousand and six showed a two percent increase.
Two percent increase in two thousand and six?
In G R T, which is probably the best indicator of the economic activity. Other tax category categories may be somewhat different, but I believe the overall for two thousand and six was similar. And in fiscal year two thousand and four and fiscal year two thousand and five, grocery receipts expanded eight percent in each year.
So we had an eight percent growth in oh-four and oh-five?
In G R T.
In G R T? Okay. And two and three? We had some disasters that we were dealing with. Did we see a growth? We had a...
Two was negative.
Two was...
I don't have the number offhand.
Okay, negative. And three, did we get out of the negative or did we grow? We started getting monies in and I think the FEMA money started circulating and all that. So I think that's where the first signs of...
Oh-three was a recovery and partly because of the increased rate of G R T that tax collections were higher.
Okay. Do we have a rate of growth in there? Because like I said, in two, oh-two, we had disasters. And... But then, once we've gotten the insurance paid up, paid out to people, FEMA was in here and all that. And so that started circulating. Buildings started being repaired. So what did we show then in, you know, three? Do you have that number?
I don't have that number.
You don't have that? Okay. Would you be able to provide that?
Sure.
Okay. Now, let me go back again. And do we have the numbers in the... Okay, we've got the projected growth. How about the... At the time, between two and six, zero-two and zero-six, did we have a projected collections rate versus the actual collections in those years?
Based on the audited statements, there were basically losses in each of those years. In other words, the actual revenues did not meet the estimated revenues.
Okay. So basically, in a nutshell, in the five-year span, going back five years, in the methodology and putting these numbers together, that the projected collections really didn't match up to the actual collections? So we... All five years?
I'll need to look year-by-year if you want a specific. But in terms of whether or not there were adequate revenues to take care of all of the appropriations and authorizations, no, there were not. There were not adequate revenues.
Okay. Not adequate revenues, okay. What would you say then? I know you just said that you didn't have the numbers offhand. But what would you say in the average, over the span of the five years, you would say the difference between actual projections versus actual collections? What did we... How off were we in projections versus actual collections? In general, summing the whole five years?
Are you talking individual, these individual taxes? Or are you talking revenues versus budget?
Revenues versus budget.
If you want to go back to the year two thousand and four and what was budgeted and what came in. In two thousand and four, the governor's budget was at three ninety, I believe. The legislature passed a four-ten budget and three ninety-two came in. In two thousand and five, I think the governor's budget was at four-ten. Four forty-seven was the budget for the legislature and four oh-nine came in. So with that tracking, it seems like every year we've been overestimating our forecasts. And when the budget doesn't come in, it affects refunds, vendor payments.
Okay. So actually, then, in the budgeting process, then, that would be inclusive of the rate of growth. You would look at the rate of growth versus the actual collection of the previous year to hopefully come up with an estimated or projected collections for this year. Wouldn't that be? Wouldn't that be pretty accurate?
That's what we try to do. We try to look at the years, the previous years, smooth out those anomalies that are there, and then move forward from what we have and what we've received through the years. So at this point, after looking at five months and the three previous years plus the two, two thousand and two and three, it seems like we are tracking at a lower level than at what... Than the four fifty-six. That's very conservative. I mean, if you look at the previous three years, the four-ten budget, the four forty-seven, the four thirty-five, we didn't meet any of those. And it seems like we're just accumulating debt with refunds and vendor payments and M I P and all the other obligations the government owes the people of Guam.
Okay. But what I'm trying to get to here, Mr. Chairman, this is the fact that we are tracking that we are... This government is growing. And then, back to the economists, that we're showing a rate of growth based on G R T, are we not? Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, that we have dropped the rate of unemployment down from a double-digit. We're down to... Where are we at now?
I believe the last published was September two thousand and six at six point nine percent.
Six point nine, okay. Six point nine we were at. In two thousand and two, we were at what, roughly? In the midst of the disaster?
I don't have the numbers offhand, but it was around eleven percent.
Eleven, okay. So we've dropped basically five percent. We've got more people employed at this point, right? Which will mean... Which will mean, again, okay, more people employed. Now, more people being employed means more individual income taxes, basically, right? Basic...
It depends on...
In general, yes. But there's also the changes in the tax rates that affect the revenues.
Is it safe, then, to assume that as more people are employed, as we've... The unemployment rate has dropped, I guess, from five percent, that more people employed, therefore, companies are employing them and their companies are a little more prosperous at this point to be able to employ more people? Do we see these people, then, as being employed entry-level, minimum wage earners? Or where are they at in the line of employment and salary-wise?
The industries that have grown the most have been construction and hotels and related after the recovery from nine eleven. Those have shown the most recovery. And also, in more recent months, the construction industry has picked up.
Mr. Chairman, my question basically is, I'm trying to figure out, again, the methodology in which we determine a projected budget versus the actual. And I know that the Chairman and the Vice Speaker has constantly asked about the methodology used to come up with the forecasts, basically. And I'm trying to find out, again, if, in fact, the economists, B B M R and all the individuals that put this... Put the budget together are actually in communication in that respect. Because, you know, it's... It may not be that simple. I mean, I'm not an economist by no means. But we look at the rate of growth versus the actual collections to really come up with our projections for this year or that year that you're putting a budget together and come up pretty close to a figure that may be accurate to be able to present to this body. But I'm coming to the conclusion, Mr. Chairman, that the communication does not happen in regards to that.
Do you want to ask a question?
Yeah. Are there communications?
Can I just say something about the way the taxes work over the past four, five years? Of course, our economy seems like it's improving. People are getting employed. Looks like G R T, as Gary said, it's up by two percent. But if you look at the income tax side and what Bush has done with the federal side of our revenues, it's dropped drastically. So the increase in the G R T is not equivalent to the loss in revenues from the income tax side.
Senator Lohan, did you want to go ahead and get an answer from the gentleman?
So more people can be employed, but the tax revenues from those people that are employed, it's not at the same rate that the economy is booming.
So we have this projection, this off-projection. We have, I guess, we have President Bush to blame for our...
If you look at the trend and the... This model I printed the first day, I believe, or second day of the roundtable discussion that we passed out, it will show you that income tax dropped drastically the last four years by probably sixty million dollars. While the increase in G R T is very steady. It's not at the rate of the sixty million dollar loss the last four years.
Mr. Chairman, this will for right now. Senator Lohan? Yeah, we'll go to the progress here. Go ahead and answer the question, Dr. Howes.
To answer Senator Lohan's question, I was just provided the numbers. From two thousand and four to two thousand and five, the bottom-line revenue in the government of Guam increased four percent from two thousand and five to two thousand and six, one point two percent from two thousand and six to two thousand and seven, four percent.
All right. Senator Pangalina, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions. And I guess we're discussing corporate income tax and individual income taxes. In two thousand and five, the corporate income tax was estimated to be about sixty-three million. In oh-six, it was forty-eight. And in oh-seven, it's sixty-one. Revised from a seventy-two original estimation. I'm just kind of wondering why we're seeing that huge difference from oh-six to oh-seven, even at the sixty million dollar level or the sixty-one million dollar level? And again, I asked last week whether it's a difference of, you know, economic activity or the net operating loss deductions. It's just huge.
Last year, when we looked at the amount of the N O Ls, we were, I guess, looking at the number and how fast it was increasing. So we were figuring that it was probably already either being all used up or almost used up. But I don't believe that that probably is the case. And people are still filing N O Ls that are eating into profits, into their profits this year, which means lower taxes.
And what was the... Do we have the final number there handy for the oh-six? Even a draft number on total corporate income tax?
Total income un-audited is fifty-seven point eight million.
Fifty-seven. So we saw in... So it would have gone from forty-eight, fifty-seven was the actual. And again, the idea is that we'll still see an increase in corporate income tax versus the actual number from the year before. Now, in the individual income tax, the total number for oh-five was thirty-eight, or that was the budgeted number, forty-one in oh-six. And now we're looking at an increase from forty-three to sixty in oh-seven. What was the actual number in oh-six?
Okay, in oh-six, the un-audited number is forty-seven point one.
So forty-seven. Do you have the actual number for oh-five by any chance? No?
I couldn't, but go ahead, I'll just see.
Yeah. I guess what I'm trying to point out, I guess, is, and trying to cut to the chase here, so to speak, with regards to this budget, is that we had revenue estimates that were done by the administration, accepted by this body as being on time, on target, and so forth. The administration has gone back and revised its numbers and is now saying we're going to be way off. And... Because it is way off. And that now the legislature is arguing that, no, we're right, so that we don't have to cut expenditures or make adjustments. And I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, that the budget does not make any adjustments at all, as far as I'm concerned, with regards to the way we're going to be running this government. No matter what number we accept, we're still going to spend way beyond what we collect, what we collect from our new revised revenues, what we collect from our amnesty program that was never figured into it, what we collect from the real estate amnesty, and then what we collect from borrowing, all for operating this government. And let me tell you, in terms of looking at this, the law says that... The law and the practice really is that out of income tax and corporate income tax and individual income tax and withholding income tax, we will pay tax refunds. Now, the current funding level for the income tax refunds is about three million, four million dollars a month, correct? Somewhere in that...
In actual refunds paid out.
In actual funds paid out. Now, in order to pay out refunds on time, we have to fund it close to six and a half million dollars a month, correct? About seventy-two divided by twelve, just on an average. About six and a half million dollars a month on the average. Some months it'll be more because of collections. Now, in this budget at all, there's no accounting for that. Is that correct? That we're not even borrowing money to pay the income tax refunds because we're assuming, from all the numbers that have been submitted, that we're going to continue to fund income tax refunds at about three point eight million dollars a month. That we're not going to catch up with income tax refund payments, even in all this borrowing, even with all the amnesty, and even with the additional revenues. We're just going to let the people wait. Is that correct in this plan? Pretty much? I mean, there's no additional revenues earmarked to go into the income tax refund accounts.
We're kind of jumping.
You know, Senator, four years ago or three years ago, when we first met with Lou and a group of business people, we had the plan. The plan was to borrow with a bond, reduce our expenditures, and increase our collections. We did two of that. We did reduce. We did collect more, but the bond never happened. So that had an effect every year after that.
I understand that. But I'm saying that...
Senator Pangalina, would you allow the chairman to chime in on what you were saying?
Oh, no, I'm going to continue. I know that's farther down the line. I have some questions, but the senator from Baragat is doing so. I'm kind of in line. I'll get to those questions when it's my turn. But there's some issue there for tax refunds when we get to it.
Go ahead, Senator Pangalina.
On the specifics, I guess, we'll discuss the specifics on that. But just that question, this does not change our approach to paying income tax refunds. There's no additional revenues that are going to go into it earmarked for it. All the new revenues in the increase and the decreases and the net revenues increase is just for operations.
You know, Senator, when we estimate like a seventy-two million dollar refund or a fifty-seven, we're supposed to put that and pay the taxpayers that amount for the next year.
Right.
That never happened because we were always behind people.
Behind, I understand.
And trying to catch up to that, it's very difficult.
I know.
When the revenues aren't there to support everything else.
I know.
We need to look at revenue enhancements.
I understand.
Look at where we can make money to pay the people of Guam.
We are borrowing thirty million dollars, aren't we?
Borrowing is not revenues. It's... It's...
We are going to access an additional $30 million in this, correct?
That's part of the proposal, but...
That's part of the proposal. And we are going to increase the revenues collected, the cash collected, not increase the revenues. We're going to increase the cash collected by $17 million in the other amnesty programs, correct? And we're just not changing our approach to the income tax refunds.
Actually, former Speaker and Senator Pangolino, as you were asking that question, I was trying to figure out... I was thinking your question through, and if we do get the line of credit, which basically goes to pay these vendors that have been waiting for up to five months to get paid for their actual products or services or medicines they provided, either through any type of social programs that we have, that would then free up the revenues that we receive monthly so we can pay up, pay that full amount that is being reserved for refunds. In other words, increase the amount.
But those revenues are going to salaries, because we're not cutting them at all, basically. I mean, those revenues that you say you're going to free up...
Right now, because...
They're still going to go to current obligations, aren't they?
If we get the line of credit, then we will not have that pressure. See, that would relieve the pressure on our monthly receipts to take care of our current level of operations. If we have that line of credit, that basically pays down the vendors that are in our books, and then therefore the revenues that we'll then generate will basically be very current, and then we can fully set aside that amount that is being, for purposes of presentation, put in the provisions for refunds.
But Lou, under your current budget, your current operating structure, your current cash operations, you're not putting aside that $7, $6.5 million. So with the new monies, they're all earmarked, there's no earmark for an increase in that set aside. That's the way I look at it. I may be wrong. The other thing that I want to just ask is, I understand that when you said all these budgets, that in 2004, we had a budget projection of 410, 390 came in. In '05, we had a budget projection, or a budget of 435, 409 came in, or 410 or something. And in '06, we had a budget of, was it 436? The '06 budget was about 4...
'06 was 435.
435 and how much came?
417 came in.
417 came in. Let me ask you this. In those fiscal years, what was your operating budget? What was their expenditure? Did you spend 410? Or in '04, did you spend 392 because that's all you got? Or did you decide to spend 410? In '05, you knew you were going to have 409. Did you spend 409 or did you spend 435? In '06, we knew it was 435. It came in at 417. Did you spend 417 or 435?
Senator, I'm sure you've got those reports in front of you, and every year in which you stated or you identified, the government has been spending more than what they have received in revenues, and I think that's why we're here. There's not been a real recognition as to what the government expenditure level is and what it has been over the last 14 years. That's why we have this huge deficit.
I know, but how much have you added in this huge deficit in the last three, four years? That's the thing. I mean, why and what change is going to occur? Because I don't see the change in this proposal. You're not saying, "Let's face the reality and spend what we're going to bring in." You're saying, "Let's figure out a way to spend, bring in more money so that we continue to spend what we really don't have." I'm just not seeing the change in the structural cost. You have a structural deficit, but there's no structural change to deal with a structural deficit, with the exception of, "Let's just borrow more money." And I think when I look at those structural changes that need to occur, you know, because to deal with this structural deficit, that's a new term for me. You know, I've never heard that new term, that, I mean, maybe that's what caused us to face that reality is, we finally found a term we understood. But it's always been an operating deficit. Now it's a structural deficit. And is that all that's needed, just to change the name to give me confidence that we're going to change the practice? I just don't see it. Now, again, I think that the bottom line here is, the legislature wants to retain those revenue numbers, because I, from the line of arguing, that seems to be, the line is...
Wrong assumption.
Wrong assumption, that then let's just move forward, and let's pass the bill or do something, because if we're not going to argue about the numbers, then let's argue about structural changes that we need to make in order to deal with the structural deficit.
Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Representing the administration, we're very pleased you're here this morning. Now, I'm kind of new to this, but I have tons of questions to ask about the income tax portion of the bill. And looking at the numbers, I'm very concerned about accepting a 38% increase in individual income tax projections. You're proposing that we revise the individual tax revenue projections from $43 million, $485,000, da-da-da-da, to $60 million plus. This is a 38% increase in projected revenue for individual taxes. You know, I can understand a 5% variance or maybe even a 10% variance, but how can we be thinking of close to 40% increase in income tax? Could you explain that, Mr. Lohan?
Okay. If you look at both the individual income tax and you look at the withholding taxes, there's a drop in withholding taxes, which are related to the income taxes. Income taxes are filed at April 15th with usually people who pay, and withholding taxes are withheld from employees during the year. So what it seems is happening is less revenues are coming in from the withholding, so they're making payments at the end of the year on April 15th.
Do you have any idea of how many individuals have opted to move away from the system they were using in order to retain more of their money?
I don't have that number, but talk is out there. You haven't paid my refunds for two years. Why do you want to take my money for the third year?
So you're comfortable that this is primarily attributed to that, the significant increase of nearly 40%?
To me, it seems there's that relationship between the withholding tax and the payment at the end of the year.
Okay. Let's keep going. Now, public law 28-68 for fiscal year 2006, the Budget Act at that time, projected $41.4 million in this category, individual tax, income tax. How off or how far off were you folks in projecting the 2006 collection?
I don't have those numbers with me.
You don't have that number? See, that number would be important for us to get an idea of how that would compare with the 2007 projection.
What is your question, Senator?
My question is, how off was your projection for individual income tax that was contained in the fiscal year 2006 budget, which was $41.4 million, compared to the actual amount that was collected for individual income taxes in 2006? Or comparing the projection with the actual receipt?
Yeah. I don't have that summarized by category from one fiscal year to the next, but I do have some, like, I have the actuals, I don't have the original adopted revenues that were passed to the budget.
I don't know what the adopted was, but for 2006, what my record shows at revenue taxes, $40 million, $199, $398, income tax, individual.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, that would be a little less than the projected income tax revenue, which was at $41.4 million. Now, also, you folks appeared before the 28th Guam Legislature last August, on August 15th, and you defended the 2007 proposed fiscal year budget and the projections therein. Really, there has to be something more than just folks deciding to change their withholding amounts. There has to be something more in your projections for the remainder of this fiscal year to, really to substantiate the projection of a 38% increase. What do you think's going to happen in the next seven months that can help explain this difference? Is it just withholding tax changes? Do you expect an up sweep in the economy? Do you expect people to respond to your tax amnesty positively in the next seven months that would contribute to this significant increase in individual income tax projections?
Through the years, the withholding rate also has dropped, which also reflects a decrease totally in the withholding taxes that we receive. The economy is getting better. People are filing more taxes, but if you look at what has happened in the last year or so, when the court said, "Pay out EITC," people are now, with our payments, our refunds has jumped drastically. People are now filing returns just to get the EITC. So a big imbalance in the revenues coming in versus what the court has ordered us to do to pay out EITC.
I see. Well, you see, Mr. Lohan, what I'm trying to get at is, I'm concerned that we're just being too optimistic in proposing this 38% projected increase in individual income taxes. Now, so far, at least according to your report from the Department of Administration, up until February 28th, '07, which is the first half of the fiscal year, the first five months, we've collected $16,642,000, and this is in individual income taxes. But what do you think's going to happen in March and in the coming six months to help you really be comfortable with your projected 38% increase in individual income tax projections? There's got to be something out there that makes you feel really confident that we're going to get a 38% increase. What is it?
It's just the withholding taxes, ma'am. I can't see any other reason why people will not, or reduce their withholding, is to pay at the end of the year.
Okay. All right. Now, last week when we met, you sort of were talking about this model, moving from a three-year model to a five-year model to project the revenue in this category. How could the model be so far off in the past, even the three-year model, and what have you done to tweak it so that we can be confident in this new projection? In other words, is your five-year model better than the three-year model? What's the difference between the two?
If we could just step back for a second and just recap the exercise we went through over the last week or so. We have asked Gary Hiles to run some different models to test the 434 number we had. And so he did run several models, and they do take into account a number of years. I think one of his scenarios ran as far back as seven years, where's the data? So if we could allow Gary to kind of walk through some of the forecasting stuff...
Okay. Give us the highlights.
Basically, what I did is I looked at the revenues, just asked to look at the revenue sources independently and come up with a forecast for the fiscal year '07. So what I did is I looked at the data for the last nine years, and to forecast this year, I looked at what's the relationship between the first five months of the revenue and what it turns out to be at the end of the year. And then ran a regression analysis, which computed an equation for that, and then it created a predicted value for the revenue for fiscal year '07, a 437.5. And of course, there's some variability in the past year, so you would expect some variability in the forecast, but that gives you an idea. Also, the, I think the three versus five years was talking about the weighting of how the revenue comes in in different months. So if you weight it from different time periods, you'll get somewhat different results.
I'm just going to have to follow up, because I've been working with BBMR for the longest time. That's interesting you talk about regression analysis. Again, I'd assumed from BBMR that the reason they were not utilizing regression analysis was because of all these, they had some issues and fluctuations and not being online with what was accepted by the administration and what was projected and what actually came in. And I'm going to ask that question. With this change, everything's all of a sudden changed, and I'm glad, but where is BBMR here? How much has BBMR contributed to this? Again, we all know the role of BBMR, and I don't see him here, and it seems like there's been a whole new change in how things are calculated. Is there a reason why BBMR is not here?
Senator, to answer your question on the change in methodology, we haven't changed the forecasting methodology based on the concerns expressed...
Except, I'd like to have Carlos Perdallio here, because that's a shock to me. And so if you're saying there has not been a change, obviously, we've gone to three to five years, you bring up about regression analysis, and what I'm concerned is, BBMR is a certain function in the administration, especially when it comes to projecting out, and then with the projecting out, and then not only do you project out and provide budget... I'm sorry, Senator Guthers, I'm just going to, because I'm seeing gaps here. I'm seeing gaps here in now your methodology. Again, last week, when we talked about the roles of BBMR, and the roles of BBMR is to not only project forward and come up with a budget to the administration, to the governor, to provide to the legislature, but it's also to track the monies coming in and to make adjustments downward. And right now, I'm seeing a complete change of methodology and formula, and Gary, I respect you, I'm just wondering now if there is a certain instrument of the administration that has this role, they're not here, and I am seeing many changes. And I'd like to get an understanding, has there been a change through, by the administration? Are they using some other calculation? With that, is BBMR have a different role? Because obviously, I don't see anyone from BBMR here, but I just want to interject in that, because obviously, there has been a change.
I'm sorry, Senator. I will follow up and see where BBMR is in this process, but in terms of the modeling that Gary has done, it's really, it was really to test the 434 based on concerns expressed by the legislature at the drop in revenue projections. So the methodology for determining the 434 has not changed. What we've asked Gary to do is to test that number, and 437 statistically is pretty close to the 434. So it is a verified number.
All right. Thank you very much, Senator Calvo. Senator Guthers, do you have the floor?
Thank you very much.
We'll go ahead and ask Dr. House to continue his explanation.
Thank you.
I wouldn't say it's really any decision at this point to change the methodology, but we're, yeah, I think we're trying to look at different approaches to see if we can perhaps get something more reliable in the future and then take it from there.
Thank you, Gary. The importance of this, though, is that you need to share this in more detail, whatever the model is you're using, we need to have a written explanation of it, because we want to verify the numbers also. That's our responsibility. That's our responsibility, is to verify the numbers that you're providing to us so that we can reach the same conclusions you have. So far, I'm having difficulty reaching the same conclusions, and let me explain why. Now, over the weekend, as we left here, all of us, I'm sure, went home and thought about, uh, the governor's bill in our initial discussions, and we're trying to figure out, uh, the projections that you've included in the first section of the bill. Uh, I've heard the explanation on the W four forms. Yes, people are tired of waiting for their tax refunds, so they're making changes, uh, on their deduction forms so that they perhaps can claim more dependents and lower their withholding, uh, responsibilities. But then also thinking about it, uh, I've also come up with something else, and, uh, this is a different explanation, I think, than what you folks have given to us in terms of what is the actual cause of the increase in your individual, uh, tax category projections. Uh, I've noted, in fact, a decre, decrease in withholding taxes, and I took out my calculator and looked at some disturbing calculations, and these are based on your numbers. Now, if we add the original projections of the individual income taxes for this fiscal year, which are in the original fiscal year oh-seven budget, it says forty-three million, four hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars, plus withholding, one hundred eighty-eight, six hundred forty-four, four nine six million dollars. This would give us a total of two hundred thirty-two million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-one dollars. If we add up the revised projection in this bill, which you're proposing for individual income tax, which would be sixty million, eight hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars, plus the withholding, which is one hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred forty-three, three hundred ninety-two million dollars, we have a revised total of two hundred sixteen, zero, zero, seven, one, four, oh, million dollars. So how do you account for a loss of over sixteen million dollars in individual and withholding taxes based on these numbers? We're gonna see a loss, not an increase.
These numbers are, again, based on what has come in and history of the last three years or, or five years. Um, it's, it's, it's an amount that we looked at and, uh, figured that this is the estimate that we may be losing, um, uh, or gaining, depending on what category you're looking at. Uh, it is a number, it is a number that can be changed and, and what comes in in March or April, um, um, as the numbers come in, but for the first five months, this is what we're tracking.
Okay, well, what, what this shows, uh, Mr. Loggins, really is, in terms of, uh, corporate taxes, you're, you're actually reducing your projection from seventy-two million dollars down to sixty-one point five million. That's almost an eleven million dollar, uh, reduction in projected revenue. If you add up the reduction in the corporate taxes, the individual taxes, and withholding taxes, you're telling this legislature that we will be receiving twenty-seven million dollars less than originally anticipated. Are my calculations correct so far?
That is probably correct, ma'am.
Did the U.S. Congress pass any additional legislation that's gonna further reduce our income tax base?
You know, going back to your total for, for, if I may add on, the corporate, individual, and withholding, there's also a, a downward on the provision for refund from seventy-five to sixty-eight. So it's, it's like a reduction of, uh, sev- seven million dollars. So if you take that seven million dollars and you offset by your total, there's gotta be a, a slight decrease.
Senator, would you go ahead and, uh, we're getting close to the, uh, twelve o'clock hour. Go ahead and, we'll allow you to come back, and you will have the, the floor when we return.
Just let me end, end with this note. And, you know, I really respect the individuals up here, they have a hard job. But in coming before the legislature and then really sitting down and looking at the numbers, and, you know, that's what teachers do, you sit down, you get your calculator out, you add, you subtract, you do your statistical tests, and you come out with some findings. What I'm concerned about, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that as, as we proceed with this bill, we have to proceed with the correct understanding of what the numbers are, and the projections have to be very realistic. I'm not certain at this point if the projections are realistic. If the projections are not realistic, then we're gonna be in the same boat we are right now on the current fiscal year two thousand budget. So that's my major concern.
Understood. We'll be in recess until two P.M., at which time we'll reconvene.
When you add up the revised projections for the individual income tax plus the withholding , uh, projection, uh, we have a total of two hundred sixteen million dollars, uh, plus, which certainly is a lot less, uh, than the original projection. And I was concerned about the sixteen million dollar difference in the individual and withholding taxes. And then I also said, uh, before we broke up for lunch, that, uh, last Friday, uh, you know, the legislature, uh, was concerned a little bit about the reduction in the corporate taxes from seventy-two million dollars to sixty-one point five million in the projection, and that, that was about eleven million dollar reduction in, uh, projection in corporate taxes. So if you add up the reduction in the corporate projection and now the individual withholding taxes, basically, uh, the administrative representatives are telling the legislature very clearly that we will be receiving twenty-seven million dollars less than was originally anticipated. So I wanted to find out if these, uh, calcul, calculations were correct, and if I'm not mistaken, uh, Director Loggins did say that that's basically correct. What do you count for, Mr. Loggins, in the significant reduction in the projection for corporate taxes?
Seventy-two million dollars to, uh, estimated last year at the beginning of the year, uh, to be received through the year, was based on an assumption that the, uh, net operating loss deductions that were allowed for previous years, um, um, NOL, which they carry forward, um, was, we assumed a bigger amount that was, than what we are seeing now. So, uh, what has been filed, uh, was, was a lot less than what we, we thought we would be receiving. So that was, that's why we made that downward adjustment.
Do you believe that, uh, with your tax amnesty program, that you expect to receive, uh, monies beyond what you've projected here in the revised projection number from corporations that may change this figure?
That number that we're projecting, I believe it's, uh, what we, we see in receivables is about fifty-eight million dollars. We're looking at collecting, uh, about eighteen percent of that through the amnesty, which is about twelve million dollars, eleven or twelve million dollars.
And, and that figure has...
That's not, uh, in that number.
It's not in that number?
No, that's in a, a different category.
All right. Now, also last Friday, uh, Senator Pangolinan asked you, "Is the reduction in the corporate taxes indicated a slowdown in business?" You know, I've been out there talking to business people, and, uh, they're telling me right now, business is very slow on the island. And, uh, especially now with the, the, the reservations of people to even spend disposable money because they're very worried about the condition of the government of Guam, and our middle-class, uh, citizens, many of whom work for the government of Guam, are holding back, not knowing how secure they are in their positions and so forth and so on. So this is having an impact on the private sector. That was, I think, what Senator Pangolinan was trying to, uh, bring up last time. Uh, is that assumption correct, that you're seeing a slowdown in the business sector right now?
We looked at, uh, some numbers, and it seems like GRT, uh, seems to be increasing, as, as Gary said earlier, it's increased by two percent, uh, um, overall. I don't know what that, I'm not an economist, but, uh, from the numbers that are coming in, um, through income tax and, um...
Well, see, I, I see the inconsistency in the, in that with the, uh, twenty-seven million dollar reduction in the projected corporate, uh, revenue.
But that's an estimate. That's an estimate.
I understand. But see, see the inconsistency is that, uh, some of us are seeing a slowdown or a downturn. In fact, we might even be seeing more than that, a recession or a depression in some ways. I'm concerned, I'm very concerned about these numbers. Now, uh, you said you're using sort of a revised model to project revenue, uh, and that you did not use this model last August, is that correct? That was my understanding.
Uh, I, I believe the way budget works is they have a, a formula that they've been using through the years, and what they used last year was probably the same that they used previous years.
Okay. And here's what I'm getting at. If, uh, we didn't use this, this five-year thing, uh, last August, really, you have to give us a reason to believe that we should have more credence in the revenue projections, uh, seven months later based on this other model that we're using. Uh, you know, we were off by as little as seventeen percent in the withholding category and as much as thirty-eight percent in our projections in the individual income tax category based on your new submission in the governor's bill. So how can you assure the legislature at this time that your new projections will be better projections based on this new model than your last ones were?
Well, it's apparent that we're not paying our bills. So those, that, to me, that's an indication that our revenues are too high or our estimates are too high for the revenues coming in. So you gotta look at how you can manage what's coming in to make payments on what you already owe.
Okay, so you're saying you're trying to be more realistic and more conservative?
Where, see, as numbers come in, that number begins to be more, um, accurate than what was back in, in, in October.
Okay. Now, let me ask another question, and this one might be a little strong. But would you admit to this legislature, uh, representatives of the administration, that you, in fact, overestimated the revenue to make the budget balanced in the last submission? Not this submission, but the previous submission?
Of the way we worked the budget, um, was, uh, we in the administration worked a budget, came to the legislature and submitted it to the, uh, to the vice speaker, and we worked together. We came up with a number, we thought that number was gonna be there at the beginning of the year. That was our belief, that it was there.
Yeah, there was an estimation, and we ratified it, and we brought it down to four fifty-six. But I'm gonna get, anyway, continue because I, I'm, I have some, a lot of questions for this administration, but I just wanna clarify that.
Senator Guthers?
Thank you. I think, uh, first, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say I do appreciate the sincerity and the, the willingness of the representatives of administration here, uh, to work closely with the legislature. But I think it's also important, uh, that, uh, we recognize that there were some problems with the last submission, and that is what is, uh, at least on my part, influencing how I'm thinking about the new numbers. I'm a conservative person when it comes to finances, and I don't want to, uh, be overly optimistic on projections, I wanna be very pragmatic about it because I don't wanna see, I don't want us to go into the same scenario in six months that we're trying to resolve today for this fiscal year. Uh, another concern I have, which I'll, I will bring up later as we move forward, is the fact that the governor's plan is strictly dealing with the next six months, and I don't see any, uh, long-term solutions that will take us through beyond fiscal year two thousand seven. Now, I've heard on the radio that there's gonna be another plan for fiscal year two thousand eight, and a lot of the governor's pronouncements that he made about identifying potential new sources of revenue will be included there. But right now, it's important for the public watching us this afternoon or learning about the proceedings today to understand that the governor's bill only deals with the current fiscal year, and it truly is a stopgap measure, it is nothing more than that. It doesn't get us beyond the problems that we're experiencing at this point, and the same problems could occur again if there's not a more comprehensive submission from the governor on, uh, real concrete revenue enhancements and changes in the way the government is operated. Thank you.
Senator Palacios, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's very clear to me, of course, that millions and millions of dollars are owed to the people of Guam, and what I'd like to know from the administration is that, especially from the Director of Revenue and Taxation, is what do you attribute this collection problems to? For example, and I'll give you specific questions, have you experienced an increase in your personnel staffing and collections in the last, let's say, the last three fiscal years?
Senator, um, is your, is your question more tuned to the individual income tax?
Yes, because it, so let's focus to the individual income tax because eventually your response would, would apply to all of it anyway. What do you attribute the problem of collection of individual income tax? Have you experienced an increase in personnel that, that can go out and collect this and probably in bookkeeping and so forth in the last three years, or were you just status
The major problem, I, uh, when we first started was, uh, we had a hundred and thirty employees, and we didn't, we didn't staff certain areas that needed to be staffed, staffed. For example, uh, income tax processing, where you turn in your tax returns. When you turn in your tax return, that, that information gets transferred over to the, uh, processing branch, the, uh, electronic data processing branch. At the time, I only had two people in that branch. And what happens is, as they key that in and there's problems, that thing is sent back to the front for them to process, issue out thirty-day letters to inform taxpayers that there's a problem with their returns. When you don't have enough staff to, 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 uh, uh, address that function, what happens is it sits, and it sits, and it sits, and when there's additional revenues that can be made because we disallowed an item because we felt it's not proper, and we don't get the letters out on time because we don't have the proper staff, we lose that revenue.
Did you, did you request for that additional personnel so that you can enhance the collection so that perhaps we don't have to offer this amnesty?
Uh, we, we came up with, um, uh, a certain amount of, a level of, uh, employees that we needed. Uh, I can't recall what that was, that was several years ago. We did hire, we are now up to a hundred and sixty, uh, employees, uh, and that was because of the revenues that are coming in, we didn't have enough to hire enough people. But we also had other technical problems. Training was one of them. We, in, in, prior to two thousand and three, uh, there was no training plans for, for Prior to 2003, there was no training plans for collections, for audit, for processing. So what was happening was, we were issuing out letters and making assessments on taxpayers and not giving them their taxpayer rights as required by the federal law. So what happened was, we didn't even have a taxpayer advocate at the time, and somebody took us to task. We went to district court, and we lost because of that. Now, we're trying to correct all these problems. We've trained the audit staff, we've trained the collection staff. There's an ongoing, or there will be an ongoing collection class this April with IRS, and that's where we've been, where we were heading. If we had everything back in 2003, our revenues probably from collections could be a little bit higher than it is now. But we did see an improvement in the last three or four years. The first year, I believe, we collected less than 20 million. Today, as we speak, we probably collected over 80 million.
You know, this legislature provided you, of course, with the authority to contract for attorney. Has that been done, that perhaps maybe some of these cases take it to court?
Yeah.
And we don't have to beg these people to pay us?
When we passed the law for the attorney...
Yes.
What happened was, we were going to use the fund from the passport, but see, we already used that fund to hire collectors. So we either have to move those people out into the general fund and then hire an attorney. But right now, my staffing level is already filled with just the general fund employees that I have.
One last item. You know, I noticed that in this submission by the governor for a reduction, that even including your department is going to suffer a cut, and I think that you need all the strength, that you, don't you agree with me?
But we have, when I first, when I first, when I first asked, when I became a director for the first time, I did come before the legislature with my budget, and I was told to live within my means.
Yeah, but you see, you need to be able to collect, say, because that's the key to this, and you're talking about... Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But of course, if you give me more money, I will collect more.
Thank you very much. Speaker Forbes recommends.
Thank you very much. This is going to sound like a funny question, and were someone from BBMR here, I would direct the question at the BBMR person, because that would be most appropriate. But since there isn't someone here from BBMR, whoever is in a position to answer this first kind of funny question, if you wouldn't mind. You know, in a normal year, what's the distribution between corporate and personal? Is it 50-50? Is it 60-40, leaning towards one way or the other? Is it 70-30, leaning one way or the other? How does it normally break out, in a normal year?
Within the income tax...
Yeah, between corporate and personal.
We can do quick calculations, so we have another conversion. Do you happen to...
I'd look myself, except I don't have the right glasses, so I'm kind of a butt-sit right now. Small numbers will elude my eyes.
It looks like, from the graphs that we, the data we got from our system, income tax, we received 40,199,398. And for corporate...
I'm sorry?
That's individual income tax. For corporate, we're looking at 57 million, 809...
What year was that?
2006.
That was 2006 actuals?
That's what's showing in our database.
For actuals?
Right.
Now, is that normally the way it is? That corporate's higher than personal, or is personal normally higher than corporate, or is it normally 50-50? What's the general pattern of distribution?
It looks like corporate is always a little bit higher than individuals.
Okay. The reason I ask is because in the original FY2007 distribution, you do, in fact, have a significantly higher corporate and a significantly lower personal. If we were to adopt these revised revenue estimates, you would almost have a 50-50 split between corporate and personal. Now, I'm not going to, you know, you guys got numbers that I don't have, so I can't dispute the specifics of these things. But isn't there something odd about winding up with a 50-50 split, where normally, in a normal year, you would have a tendency to lean towards corporate, if that is, in fact, the case?
I think the increase in the income tax side, again, from the revenues that we're going to be receiving, is due to the adjustments people are making on the withholding through the year to reduce their withholding and pay on April 15th. That's a theory, I believe, is happening.
But given the fact that we've been so delinquent on income tax refunds, wouldn't a more likely theory be that people would be maxing as much as they could out of their current paycheck, so that...
Right. So you increase your exemptions and you reduce your withholding. So withholding is a lot less through the year, as our numbers show in withholding, and then your income tax at the end, on April 15th, will be a little bit higher.
Well, that's why you're estimating that.
Right.
So one is, this is kind of a zero-sum thing. You're making an assumption that because withholding is dropping, that it must mean that...
Income tax.
Personnel must go up.
Right.
Are there any other theories that could account for this, like fewer people working, lower wages?
Economy getting better.
Oh, no, no, I meant both ways. I mean, all right, if you're looking at a reduced withholding, right? So couldn't also withholding, a reduction withholding be driven by fewer employees, lower wages?
It has to do with lower tax rates, and also probably taxpayers are realizing now that each child under 17 is worth $1,000, and they weren't taking that into account, so the refunds...
Very true.
Were a lot bigger in the past, and they just don't want that big refunds anymore, so they just want to pay a little or get a little back, instead of, you know, a big refund or paying a lot.
All right. If this is the case, are you adjusting your refund reserve? Are you going to be adjusting your reserve by how much?
We did.
Well, no, they would reduce it, if that theory's true.
Yes, about 6.6 million.
But the increase in individual is much more than 6.6 million, as projected here. Maybe I'm lost, but wouldn't you have almost a concomitant reduction?
Correlating.
When the reduction reflect the increase? Wouldn't the increase have some relationship to the reduction? I'm just trying to follow the theory.
The theory's probably right, when you think that way, but when you look at the numbers and what came in through our system, that's what's showing, and that's when we could put in a factor in there and say, hey, people are now realizing that deduction for a thou, or that credit for 1,000 for each child, and make it a lot more.
I'll tell you why I raise it, because I do remember back when these numbers were first being kicked around, and I seem to remember raising the issue why corporate was so much higher than personal back then. And I thought maybe that personal was a little bit understated back then, which apparently you guys are saying was the case now. It's just unfortunate that corporate was, you know, much higher. But again, the operant theory here is that withholding's going down because people are charging more or claiming more dependents and exemptions, so there's less withholding tax paid in, but that also means concurrently that there will be less in a requirement for refunds, so the reserve can be reduced. You've reduced it by six, and you also believe there's going to be an increase in personal income taxes paid, because people will show up, instead of being able to walk away with a $1,500 refund, they'll be showing up owing 500 bucks or something along those lines. And you're quantifying the increase in personal at about, give or take, 16 million bucks. And the reduction in withholding is like 33 million bucks, and the reduction in the reserve is $6 million. Again, I don't want to overpress this, because I understand a lot of times you're driven by numbers you see as opposed to theories, but the variance in those numbers is so large, it just, I wonder a little bit about the theory. Because if withholding drops by 33, because people are probably going to pay, then I would think that you'd have something, not necessarily 33, but something a little bit closer to that, in terms of an increase in personal, or else where's that additional money gone? And if the theory is you won't need to pay as many refunds by something along those amounts, then I would think that the refund reserve would drop. And remember, it's not my theory, it's your theory, guys, so I'm just trying to fit in how these numbers all interrelate.
Probably part of the problem was, we were ordered by the court to pay out EIC, so we drove that number kind of high, at 75, which was about $25 million more, and that's our calculation of what that EIC is per year. It's about, probably about $25 million.
Now, what are you doing? Are you sitting on a bunch of EIC money now, or are you using it to pay refunds?
We're using it, 15% of the refunds, we withhold to pay EIC.
So how much has that grown to? Because I know you haven't paid the EITC yet, so...
I've been preparing monthly reports.
That would be good, because that would be a good thing to know. Because I know that you haven't started paying EITC out yet, right?
Not yet.
Now, you're going to start paying it out?
For 2005, we started.
Paying out EITC?
A hundred percent, not on the settlement.
Okay. I'm el confuso here a little bit. You're paying it out for 2005?
Right. As you file your return today for 2005...
Oh, for 2005. Oh, okay, I see. So you're just paying it for those people who are amending their returns?
Right.
How many people have amended their 2005 returns in gross numbers? Do you have an idea?
It's not amended, I think, they claim it. It's part of the return now. It wasn't like before...
All right. It wasn't when they filed in 2006 for tax year 2005. Was it part of the form then?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So they claimed it in the 2006 form?
Yes.
So now you're paying it. Did you estimate how much that's going to come to?
It's about 25.
For 2005?
Right.
And you don't know right off the top of your head how much you've reserved?
75 million.
75 million has been reserved for that specifically?
Right now, there's an average of 2,300 per claim, 2,300 per claim, and we anticipate roughly about 12,000 claims.
For 2005?
For 2005.
Okay. So, maybe I'm having a... Ballpark, how much do you think you've got socked away for EITC right now?
For the settlement, you mean?
No, just period. How much do you have socked away, period?
So far?
I don't know, but of that, how much do you have socked away specifically, you think, to pay EITC?
At least 13 and a half, I'm not sure.
So about 13 and a half of that? Is that for the court suit, the 13 and a half?
That's true.
And you're going to keep holding on to that until there's a resolution of the court case, or...
No, no, actually, the court case already says that we begin to pay on, what years?
97, 98.
Let's just clarify, it's not the court case, it's the settlement.
It's a settlement.
There's no court case.
It's a settlement.
The governor settled the EITC and said he's going to pay them.
Now, here's where...
Unlike the COLA, there's a court case.
All right. Here's where it all connects to the personal again, okay? You've got all these things happening, and I'd be a little bit more comfortable if, when I saw a number move, and the rationale about why that number was moving was such and such, and there was a corresponding change that should occur in another number as a result, that there'd be a stronger equivalence between the two numbers. And I'm just suggesting, maybe it wouldn't be a terrible idea if, you know, as this goes along, maybe you guys be thinking about that, too, that if the theory is that personal income taxes are going to move up because of the following reasons, and since there is a certain degree, it's not a perfect zero-sum game, but there is a certain degree of offset here, if one goes up, the other ought to go down, that there ought to be some greater connection between the two numbers. Right now, it just seems a little bit arbitrary. I'm not saying it is, but I'm just saying it seems a bit arbitrary, when the variance between these numbers is so big, when you have a $33 million change here, but only a $16 million change here, and one is supposed to influence the other. It just seems a little odd. So I'm just suggesting, maybe that, you know, as the days go by, that's something you might want to take a look at. I do know that last time, second looks and third looks did result in some of the numbers changing, so you might want to take another look.
Senator Calvo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, again, I want to assure any potential investor into Guam, some of the statements have been made earlier about whether we're going into a depression or the economy is turning around. There may be a problem with the appropriations and what general and what estimates are for revenues into the government of Guam, and that may be an issue that is debatable, that we need to work on. But I want to state for the record, if you look towards prior year and total collections for the first five for this fiscal year, like I said, there may be issues in regards to what revenue projections were, but for those investors that may be watching, the economy is turning around, because it's, and I'm going to repeat, and this is for the record, since I think someone made a statement here about a crisis, there may be a crisis in government, which could change this economic direction, but when it comes to the economy, and based on the revenues that are coming in year-to-date as opposed to the prior year, when you talk about total income taxes, we're seeing 9% growth from the prior year, total, and we're going to get to GRT and withholding, but even withholding, it's relatively flat when you include interest and penalties, and with GRT, we're actually up by 9%. So, and again, this is not to contradict anyone here on what the revenue projections may be, but here's just to state for the fact that when it comes to the economy, when you judge 2006, or 2007 with 2006, there is, there has been a growth in economic activity, and that's why all indicators are, show that collections are up. Now, I do want to state for the fact, and I got a call from a member of the Chamber of Commerce during lunch, I'm surprised Gary Hiles is not here, because I was going to take him to task on that. There was a meeting that the governor had with the Chamber of Commerce, I think you had it with the president, the chairman, and a couple other representatives of the chamber, but it was stated by the governor that Gary Hiles was tracking at a $450 million clip, and of course, this is something that, if that's what Gary is stating, fine, but you folks are doing it 434, and I'd rather be conservative. But again, that leads me, again, to the question, as there is not a representative from BBMR here, so I'm not too sure if it's John De La Rosa, whether it's Lou Perez, whether it's Gary Hiles or Art Illogan that is here to discuss these revenue projections, and whether it has been calculated by either Revin Tax, Department of Administration, Department of Labor, and BBMR. And I'm going to ask you one more time, where is BBMR? Are they at all part of this equation? Are they at all part of this equation? Are they at all part of these projections that are being given to us?
Mr. Chairman, yes. The revenue projection that we are using is BBMR's number.
BBMR, is there a reason why BBMR is not here?
Yes, sir. Based on Bill 15, which is presented to the governor last week, we have an April 9th deadline to resubmit, oh wait, and BBMR has been tasked as the lead agency to...
Okay, okay. So, what I'm going to request, again, in this past couple of days, talking about methodology, but it's gone again from what is, again, Carlos had mentioned, three-year tracking, the other day was five-year tracking, and now economist Gary Hiles is saying nine-year tracking. So, I'm not going to, you know, there's different interpretations in whether you use regression analysis or not, statistical methods, whether it's linear regression, I've kind of given up, I'm not an economics major either. So, what I'm going to request from the administration, you have all these calculations here. I'm requesting, I want to see the worksheet, and I want to see the worksheet by the end of the day. Since you put these numbers together, and obviously what Speaker Forbes was saying, there's so much subjectivity here and general statements, I think for the purposes of clarity, so both the committee and the legislature feels confident in these calculations, I'm requesting that those worksheets may be made available by the end of the day.
Absolutely, we'll provide it.
What is the privilege of the body without the information in front of you?
Actually, I still have questions, you know, we're still going to go...
Do you want to continue?
Actually, my opinion, you know, just if it was me, Mr. Chair, there's different questions, you know, we're going category by category. We're not going to, again, we're going, we're going to be going section by section. So, as we go by these lines, you know, I think it's, there's a lot of discovery occurring here, a lot of questions by members of the body. We can have this give and take, but you know, obviously, when it comes to the next section, if, you know, again, if there's some written information that comes in based on these calculations, we can always visit those calculations, but since the administration's already, we're trying, I'm trying to find out the calculations and the methodology. But now, we don't have the calculations, but we're going to get it, but we might as well go, since there are these different categories, I suggest, why waste time? Let's go over the numbers, because I still have many questions on the other areas as well.
That's fine, thank you. All right, Senator Palacios has the floor, we'll go ahead and wait for him to return, he'll be in recess for a couple of seconds. All right, Senator Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just probably a follow-up on what Speaker Forbes had to say when it went to the EITC. You noted that we have about 12,000 claims for 2005 on the EITC, right? And that you were starting to disburse as far back as 1997, am I right? You just noted that?
It's two separate funds. The 97, 98 comes from a settlement, which is, which we take 15% of the current revenue, or current refunds, we're giving out, we set aside for the settlement. The 2005 refunds, it includes EITC and it's part of the provisions for refunds, it's not separated anymore.
But in as far as the numbering, I guess, I just want to, because you said it's, we're up to 12,000 claims, including for 2...
That's what we anticipate.
For, including 1997 back and tracing up?
No, no, that's just for the tax year.
Just for the tax year. So, from 1997 to present, what are we going to be tracking in as far as the claims? I just want to make sure that nothing else is...
See, those are settled numbers. They're limited in each year by the settlement. It's not going to be like you get, you get a claim for $5 million and you're going to get $5 million, or $5,000, you're going to get $5,000. There's a set limit for each year. I believe it's 15, and whoever files with that in that year, that $15 million is split between the people that opted in.
Right, so there's nobody today that can claim far, as far back as 1997, right? There's a time limitation.
2000, 1997 was the year when we paid it out, so there's a statute of limitation there. In 1998, we allowed them to file, but we didn't pay it, so there's a statute there. In 95, 96, 98, 99, 2001, 2, and 2, there's no statute because we blocked out that area for them to fill out the form, so we're allowing them to file within a certain time.
And what's the time limitation there?
May of...
Of this year? And with that anticipation, have we done a guesstimate of how many claims will be processed from there?
Do you want to know how many claims are filed for those, for that settlement?
Well, yeah, just wanting to make sure that if we're within that time process, that the funding will be available, and that if we're including those years to present, then what are we looking at in as far as the total fund?
The funding will not be there. That settlement is, I believe, over eight years. And we take 15% of the current year's refunds to pay EITC, so whatever we pay out or receive or set aside, that's what we're going to settle for that year. So, if we have a lot of monies that we set aside, then we can start paying out and paying out by those years that we were stipulated to pay out through the settlement.
So, will there be a satisfaction timeline on when those things? So, the full eight years, so we're looking at eight years max, that's it? Nothing after that?
With, from the settlement date to eight years from that date, we have to reserve part of the refunds to pay the prior year EITCs. So, it's not coming out of current revenues. It's coming out of, in a way you can say it, but it's coming out of paying less refunds by 15% to pay the prior year settlement of EITC.
Okay, thank you. I'll come back to more questions when it comes to the income tax part. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions on individual income tax? Senator Pangol?
Just a couple more questions. I just want to kind of work through the employees, because employees are what's going to drive this individual income tax. I mean, you know, we may say they're going to withhold less, or so that there's less payment upfront, and they're going to pay it on April 15th, but still, it's employment levels. And from what I've seen in the numbers, number one, the governor touts that he's reduced government employment by 3,000 over the last four, five years. So, that means you're going to have less employees paying individual income taxes. What's even more critical is that the governor touts that he's reduced government employment. And if you take a look at the average government employee in terms of their income, I think it's something in the neighborhood of $12 to $15 an hour is the average pay for a government employee, which means that more likely you're going to get a more, more income taxes, personal income taxes, from these employees than if you increase private sector employees, of which the average pay in the private sector is about 674, or somewhere in that neighborhood according to the latest labor survey. But if you take a look at the governor's reduction in government employees that he says he has reduced, and by the way, I dispute those numbers, because the reduction has occurred because of, one, the reduction in the number of temporary employees that were brought on board for FEMA recovery after 2002. So, when he said he reduced government employment, those were never permanent employees of the government, actually. There's about 1,800 employees under the FEMA recovery program over those years that have been reduced, and that's where they've gone. The real solid core of the government of Guam really has not reduced that much. There has been some reduction, but it's not that much. The other number he throws in there in terms of reducing government employment is GTA, and the sale of GTA, that those have reduced government payroll, not really, because GTA has always been funded by its own operations, not from the general fund. The other thing is that the other autonomous agencies, GPA has reduced its employee level by, I think, 50 or 60 employees since the governor came into office, and so has GWA. But that, none of those were generally, general fund-supported revenues. So, the reduction in this 3,000 is a little bit of a myth, I think, with regards to the structural op, I'm going to use that word because I love it now, structural operating cost of the government of Guam has really not changed that much. The, so, but if you take a look at the increase in private sector employment over the last three or four years, it hasn't equaled that. It hasn't equaled the reduction in government employees to the increase in private sector employees, and in fact, if you take a look at those numbers, there's probably a net loss of jobs from the total economy over the last three to five years of somewhere between 1,000 to 1,500 employees. Is that enough to offset this increase that we think we're going to get in income tax refunds from the individual, considering the net loss of jobs, you know, in the economy? If you take a look at it from the perspective as outlined, just the fact that people are going to withhold less and pay more at the end, you think that's enough to see that bump of about 17 to 20 million dollars?
I know you're disputing the numbers of employees, I wasn't the one that came up with those numbers. I believe it was Carlos, and he was the one that was saying that in the line agencies itself, he's seen a reduction in employees. This reduction in employees was really driven by the revenues that were coming in. I mean, a 392 in 2003 and a 409, and it just drives expenditure down. So, just like myself, I would really feel comfortable with more employees so I can process returns. At the rate we're supposed to process returns, get them on their books, get them assessed, give it to the collectors, let the collectors go out and collect. It's just the economy and the government revenues are not sufficient enough to pay for that. Education is our priority, police departments are priority, and the hospitals are priority. So, that's where we're emphasizing and putting our efforts.
I know, and we have increased employees in those areas.
Yes, we do.
And I'm not saying they're better, they're bad. I think that, you know, we need more police officers, and that's where their increase has come about. But in terms of just the taxes that are going to be collected, with that net, I believe, if I look at all the numbers being put out by Labor Statistics, that there's been a net loss in jobs in the economy, in the total picture, government, private sector. If you take a look at the reduction in the government employees plus the increase in the private sector employees, there's a net loss of jobs. But yet, we're estimating that our individual income tax is going to increase, and those two seem to be incompatible.
Yeah, there are other factors that, just not basing also on withholding and income tax, maybe a lot of people are selling their assets, and the capital gain is kicking in, so we need to take a look at that, because, you know, if the economy look into those errors of disposition of personal assets, there's a 20%, 10% capital gain tax. So, I've seen that a lot that are coming in, so maybe that's another factor.
Sure, but didn't Lou said that you take out those?
No, I'm just saying that there are other factors that tend to increase the personal individual tax.
Right.
If I sell my assets and I have to pay a gain, it may be a big gain, depending on how much my gain is. So, if my gain is 100,000, I'm on a 28, 27% bracket, so I have to pay $27,000.
I understand, but from my understanding, in the forecasting model that they said they did, they said they took out those blips, those extraordinary gains for, to smooth out the revenue projection. I'm not saying the revenue, to smooth out the revenue projection. So, if we see a 50% gain in individual income tax, and we kind of look back and see that 50% of that gain or 40% of that gain is from the sale of personal assets, then you would take that out in your forecasting model. Not that you would take it out from the revenue accounting for it, just in your forecasting model to smooth it out. So, I would think that would be done, so I don't dispute you, John, that I agree that those increases indicate a rise in individual income tax, that they will show a rise in actual collections. But when you project for the next fiscal year, according to, you know, to BBMR, DOA, that, DOA, that those have been, have been removed from the formula in order to ensure a more accurate picture.
You know, when individuals file their returns and they report all kinds of gains and losses, and those are not part of the numbers we try to smooth out, that's part of the revenue source that come in. I think the ones that are extraordinary, like $15 million all of a sudden was showing up in our revenue, those are the numbers we try to smooth out, or the losses from a typhoon. And then the following year, FEMA comes in and all of a sudden, there's a big infusion of cash into the economy to repair the state of the island. Those are, those are the extraordinary things, but when a person sells an asset, to me, it's part of any income that he would report, those are, I don't think would be smoothed out.
Okay, so you don't take those out for forecasting purposes?
Right.
Okay.
It's hard to determine that, those numbers, when it's not staring in front of you saying, take this out.
But wouldn't you...
I got to look at, let's say, let's say you sold property, I got to look at, pull out your return, and pull out Ben's return, and say, hey, you had this unusual income, let's pull that out.
No, but...
That's very difficult to do.
I understand, but wouldn't, I understand that would be difficult, but wouldn't you just kind of like, take a look at it, that says, how come income tax increased from 40 million to 60 million, and the number of income tax returns filed goes down from 20 to 15? Wouldn't you just say, something's wrong here?
Well, could it be a trend, maybe? People are now selling their property, so we're expecting that to happen, the same thing this year, so we keep it in there.
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying that you would take a look at that as, why did that go up 20 million when I've had 3,000 less employees in the market? You know, so, the other thing, it's just kind of a technical question here. You keep mentioning that, and this is on the corporate income tax, if I could just return here just for one question, that right now, the way you've looked at the people have filed for their net operating losses deductions, and that you've made adjustments, but when did you see those? Because aren't, March 15th is when income tax, corporate income tax refunds are due. Are you saying that between October and now, you've seen corporations file their income tax refunds? And you've seen a reduction in NOLDs? Because wouldn't you know what the NOLD claims are at the time of the filing of the income tax?
When we, when we, when we process returns, we don't really itemize NOLDs to determine gross revenues from the corporate, we just look at the, look at the N number, and let's say, let's say it increased over the years. And it's a theory that there was a lot of losses in 2002 that were being carried forward. So, our conclusion was that the first year in 2003 was a bad year for 2002, so, you know, we noticed corporations weren't paying because of the losses they suffered the previous years, and so forth, and all the years that have followed. And as they use it up, our theory is that they're going to start paying taxes.
But wouldn't you have known that in March of last year, after they filed their income tax, prior to the adoption of the budget, or did we just take a look at those, that corporate income tax, the governor submitted it? I wasn't here, so I'm assuming the governor submitted his budget in January, February, and then no adjustments were made on that?
It's hard to determine NOLs or NOLDs, just like it's hard to determine somebody's income. It's based on what has been filed in the past and history. And 2002 was an unusual year, all the disasters that happened, and we tried to determine what we felt at that time was our revenues from corporate returns.
So, there was no, I'm just trying to get to the timeframe, so there was no adjustment made to the corporate income tax between the time the governor submitted it after March 15th, which is when the actual tax returns come in, the processing of those returns from March, April, May, June, till the time of October 1st or September when the budget was adopted? There was no adjustments made based on that, on getting that actual data?
I don't remember any of that adjustments.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. There are no other questions on the individual income tax, we're now proceeding to withholding taxes. Senator Calvo?
Okay, thank you again. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you again, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We go to the withholding, this is an area where, again, there is a substantial decrease. Originally, we had ratified the number given by the administration of 188,644,496. Now, the revised number is, as projected by the administration, is 155,143,392. This is substantial. How much, how much are we talking about there? That's a reduction of, of, over 30, 33 million. I don't know whether you want to re, how did you calculate that again?
The 188 or the 155?
The revision, because that is substantial.
What we saw was the first five, first five months of withholding that came in.
So the first five months of this fiscal year, what are they? From October to February?
It's 65,623,794.
65 million, and then with interest and penalties? What is that? That should be inclusive, interest and penalties?
It's about 66.7?
Yeah, 66, 66,764, right?
Right.
Okay, last fiscal year, what was your year-to-date?
66, that's it.
Interest and penalties included? Let's see, 66. So 66,573, so you netted out, we're about 200,000 above the prior, in actual collections, year-to-date collections, correct? Correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
What were total withholding taxes collected for 2006, including interest and penalties?
I don't have that number, sir.
Okay, I have it here, 164,515,000. That's from you folks.
Yes, that's what I have.
Okay, 164,515. So the new number that you're giving is 155,143,392, and this is based on your five-month tracking, and with five-month tracking, we're 200,000 above the last fiscal year, and you're looking now at a reduction from actual collections last year of 164,515,324, and now it goes down to 155,143,392. And I don't want to go back too many years, we don't, you know, that's, Art, you're in the collection business, and obviously, you're doing pretty good in collections because there's an increase. I'm trying to figure out how these calculations are coming about, because if we're five months through the fiscal year, and we are tracking it, I mean, not tracking, we are, at 200,000 above the last fiscal year, and then we get a projection that shows a reduction of about almost 10 million bucks, where in this historical trending regression analysis and nine-year model did we show this, this issue? Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I think there's been some questions brought up by the speaker, and some good questions brought up by my colleagues. I don't understand the formula and the methodology, I think the best thing to do here is get your working, you know, like I said, let's get your worksheets, let's deal with how, what you dealt with, and obviously, there were some questions, is how come things are going, you know, if collections are higher than this, then what about reserves? And, you know, and obviously, you did your calculations, you brought it to us, but I can't make heads of tail at this point, so I'm requesting, maybe we just recess, you get you yourself, and I like to see it today, but the sooner we get this thing, by 5 o'clock, we get these working papers that the administration used, because I can't make, I mean, I want, I said, I want, I want, I think it's important, we're conservative, but if we see increases dramatically here, we see even what I'm seeing in simple math on where we're at now compared to last year, and then I see this dramatic reduction from what was actually collected last year, I need to see that formula, and I see, and I'd like to see how you came about that, so again, I'm making that request.
All right, we're going to go ahead and be in recess until receipt of the actual paper, spreadsheets that come up with the calculations, which you have contained in the general fund revenue sections of this bill.
And further that, Mr. Chair, if they can get it to my committee, I'll make copies for all the members of the body, so they can do their own analysis as well.
That's fine, be in recess. Asked by the body with respect to the formulas, and given the lateness of the hours, coming up on 4 o'clock, 20 minutes before 4, we will anticipate the administration submitting the documents as requested before 5:00 PM today, but in any case, it should proceed to the Office of Finance and Budget, at which point it will be directed to the members of the body. And given the lateness of the hour, we're going to go ahead and recess until 10:00 AM tomorrow morning, and then at that time, we'll resume the committee, the whole, committee the whole will be in recess.